Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Milton School Committee meeting of June 2, 2021. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful. All right. Welcome, everyone. It's great to see everyone tonight. We call the meeting to order, and our first agenda item will be to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or additions or subtractions to the agenda? No? All right. So, anyone?
I think I'm going to strike A under six.
Okay. We're going to strike a fiscal year '22 budget?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that one change, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Wonderful. All right. Citizen speak. Do we have anyone here this evening for citizen speak? Doesn't look like it. Okay, wonderful. We are going to move on to Superintendent Jett's report.
Thank you, Jett. I would like to first start with an update from Milton Public Schools' food service program director, Jackie Morgan.
Oh, I should start off by saying that if you're comfortable and you'd like to remove your mask while you're speaking, you're welcome to do so. It makes it easier for people to hear. I guess I should have done that myself.
Brown lipstick.
And just a reminder, the microphones are typically for the people at home to hear, so it's important to look at them.
Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me. Thrilled to be here. It's been a long, wonderful 14 months. I think the biggest word I've learned through the Milton Public Schools' last 14, 15 months is pivot. So, the food service program, we've been pivoting, but we've been having a great time. And I just have to say, during these many, many months, it's been an honor to feed our families. We've fed them at the doors of our schools. We've fed them in the parking lots. It's exciting to be back feeding them in the schools. But the food service team has just been incredible. You know, when this first happened on March 13th, we jumped into action, and by March 18th, we were feeding our students in the parking lots without a, without a, without a, we just skipped right into it. So, I just have to say a million times over, the food service staff have been great. So, I just wanted to show you some things that have been happening. When we were fully remote, we were doing a drive-through, drive-feeding program where parents, families, and we decided to be an open site, so any community member in any surrounding towns could come to the Milton Schools and get food, which was really important for the Milton Schools to be part of. The USDA is paying for all of the breakfasts and all of the lunches, fully reimbursing the school nutrition program. And we really wanted to make it a program where everyone felt welcome. And that was really important right from day one, that, you know, everyone was in their own different situation. And coming by to get this food, it was basically seven breakfasts and seven lunches, and we gave plenty of milk. But we also were part of the USDA Farm-to-Family Box. And just the name of what it was called, parents were like, "Farm-to-family?" I said, "This is helping the farmers." So, everyone quickly and easily found out, like, we're all helping each other. And I don't remember if you remember the beginning of the pandemic, the news was showing them dumping out milk and dumping out mountains of zucchini and summer squash. Well, eventually, the USDA figured out to put them in these beautiful boxes. So, that middle pitcher is a 30-pound box of love, is what I used to say in line. And it really was amazing. It could have been a sliced mozzarella or Parmesan, but it had dairy, produce, and protein in every one of the boxes. And every week, we were lucky enough to receive a grant that we were getting 400 very heavy boxes, I must say. And each family that came through received a Farm-to-Family Box. And it really did help our families, whether they were food insecure or whether they were terrified of going to the grocery store. There were so many reasons why we encouraged people to come. And it also gave them a well-balanced diet with a lot of variety. The USDA worked really hard to make everything a chicken product. They really tried to pull away from pork, which is something that they learned through the, through the journey. And then also, the food service staff would be making, and the top then would be making fresh sandwiches, would be making salads. You know, we were making about 8,000 to 10,000 meals on our Wednesday drive-throughs for our families. So, we were out there in the snow and the rain and the sun, and we tried to keep everyone warm. And as you can see, that middle pitcher, the volume of food we went through was just incredible. At one point, we rented a 20-foot refrigerator to help store all of this food and keep the rotation working. But it really was quite an event. And the more people I see throughout town are just so great, so happy that we did that. And we're so happy to say we're going to do it again this summer. So, starting the Wednesday after school gets out, we'll be back in action and doing our weekly Wednesday drive-through. So, when the USDA had these grant programs, many times Massachusetts didn't get the grants. So, at one point, about a 12-week period, only the Chelsea Salvation Army and the Lynn, a Lynn Collaborative were the only ones in the country that, in the state that received the, those Farm-to-Family Boxes. So, I met with my produce company, and we created our own boxes. And we were giving up 400 of these a week, so our families would still have fresh produce. And the great thing about these is it also helped us stay in compliance with our meal subcategory vegetable groups, given if you have heard me speak before. Sorry. But we have to make sure that children have a green vegetable and a dark leafy green vegetable and beans and, and other and starch. It was just, so this just really helped us stay in compliance, which is a really big thing for me. But it also gave my staff a little bit of a break. It's been, it was a long time of packing, and we were at the doors at dismissal, giving out food, which was wonderful. This just kind of a little bit took the edge off. And it also gave our families a lot of variety. So, the dark leafy green, one week would be broccoli, the next week would be kale, the next week would be romaine. So, the people would keep coming and getting variety, and so their cooking wasn't getting boring. So, we're really thrilled to have these. And these is prob, this is probably the, we will go this summer, we'll have these produce boxes available for our families with seven servings of fruit and vegetables. And I couldn't talk tonight without talking about Stale and Rye. It was just so impressive to see how easy they just stepped right in to help our food insecure families. Marty McKenna, three to four nights a week, would deliver meals to our food insecure families. And her and I worked together to keep a nice rotation of different families. And she would pull in with her car or the food service truck, and she would just go around quietly and deliver these meals. And it was just so wonderful. And then they reached out to us and said, "We would really like to do a Thanksgiving dinner for our families." And I have to tell you, it was just incredible that on Thanksgiving Day, their whole team was in, cooking and preparing and prepping. And the first house I got to, and I brought up this big, huge box, the woman goes, "Oh, my stove's been on for an hour. I'm ready." Because everything had to be cooked. And it was just like, oh, it's just a moment. And it was just so nice to know that our families were being taken care of, and a huge thank you to Stale and Rye for that. And what we learned through this journey is that Massachusetts went into action quickly, like most states did. But what the USDA and the Department of Elementary-Secondary Ed found out is that most of our families in Massachusetts were coming to schools for their food. And this chart is probably hard for you to read, but Massachusetts is basically in the middle. And you'll see the blue line is the highest. And we have the highest rate of where families came for feeling safe to get food for their families, which was really huge. You know, I think most of us think it would be a food pantry, or a food bank, or maybe a church. So, we're really proud in Massachusetts to say that families came to schools, and we hope they keep coming this summer. And then we pivoted. So, exciting when we all, you know, found out we were coming back to school. And I met with Superintendent Jett a few times and the principals a few times. And we quickly learned that we needed to keep our students six feet apart in line. So, obviously, we couldn't have them all coming through the cafeteria. So, the school nutrition program, I applied for a lot of grants in the beginning, and we received a lot of grant money, which we're very grateful for Project Bread, the Eos Foundation, SNF Foundation, New England Dairy. So, I quickly, before the whole world beat me to it, went out and started buying carts, like a crazy person. And we did use these carts at our, feeding our children at the doors and, and bringing our food outside. But these carts have been really, really helpful. So, I just have this little picture. This is what half of the high school feeding program looks like if you haven't had a chance to see school lunch in action. We have probably 400 seats set up in the fieldhouse, and then we have a number of seats in the cafeteria. So, we knew that we needed to break the crowd up, basically. And so, what Superintendent Jett had said, it would be really great if half the kids can get their food at the fieldhouse, and they go into the fieldhouse to sit, and then the other half can get their food in the cafeteria and sit in the cafeteria. So, this has worked out really well. We're still serving free meals for all students. USDA is covering the cost of that this school year, and they're also guaranteed us through June of 2022, all school breakfasts and all school lunches will be free of charge to all students. That's a huge, because what it's really doing is it's also taking the overt identification away. Everyone just feels safe. And I have never seen so many turkey sandwiches. So, we're buying these long French baguettes. And so, at the beginning, we learned quickly that making individual sandwiches was just really time-consuming. So, we just, these long, I walk in in the morning, these long French baguettes, just all lined with them. We're trying to do a huge variety. And the students, I'm just saying, "Any other suggestions?" Like, "This is great." One girl goes, "Well, you know, I, I do like egg salad." I'm like, "Okay, we'll have egg salad." So, we're trying to do a nice variety, but we're keeping it simple, because our lines are going quickly, students are moving through quickly. And that was really important for us, because we wanted to really make sure that we didn't have children too close together. And all those blue arrows, I was down on the ground doing those. And some of the children are following the blue arrows and some are not. But it's going really smooth, and we're really, we're really pleased. And then I just have to end on one of the greatest days. I love Super Lunch Hero Day. I've always loved Super Lunch Hero Day. And it's designed after the character from this famous book, this Super Lunch Hero who saves the days with her nimchucks of her tongs and her kitchen equipment. And Superintendent Jett, I just quickly mentioned, you know, I'm just in, I'm in. What time? I'm going to put it on my calendar. And I just quickly just bought him a shirt, thinking, I'd give him a little present. He put it right on, and off we went. And it was such a special moment for those 35 hard-working, pivoting food service employees. And they were just so thrilled. And, you know, the smile, you cannot see it under the mask, Superintendent Jett, but you can see it through your eyes. And you were smiling away. And we went to every single school. He brought them all a flower. They all had the Super Lunch Heroes. The students, incredible, cards and pitches and cookies and trays of food that they didn't need at school. But just the celebration of saying you're special and you matter, and you're an important part of the Milton Public Schools. So, May 7th was our Super Lunch Hero Day. And even, even as it went along, some principals jumped in. Mr. Fish, he was all excited. He jumped in, and his, his staff all received big, huge cards, gift cards from the PTO, and just this huge thank you. And every school employee was honored. I made a video of the high school where Superintendent Jett went in and spoke to the students and brought all the food service staff out, and they were a little embarrassed. But it was just an important, special thing to do, and it, it really warmed their souls. I was just going to end by reading a little poem. So, later in the day on May 7th, this Department of Ed had a Super Lunch Hero Zoom call with all food service staff in Massachusetts. And this was written by a brand-new employee who just started to work at Department of Ed in the school nutrition department. So, I thought it was pretty powerful that this was her. She wrote, "Through winter, spring, summer, and fall, Massachusetts school lunch hero, heroes have done it all, never stopping to complain or take a much-needed rest. Our school lunch heroes continue to give their very best. With the pandemic has caused meal service to look quite different this year, change has been something school lunch heroes don't fear. Serving children in the community day after day, school lunch heroes are innovative and are paving the way. So, join me now as we celebrate you. Together, school lunch heroes make an unstoppable crew." And I couldn't say that better. Bravo. School committee members, Betty and then Bev.
So, Jett, I just want to say thank you so much for all that you've done this year. I know how hard you have worked and your staff has worked. And I, I always know that, maybe because I work in a school and I'm very close to my food service staff, I visit with them when I have a break, and they're great people. And they've always worked hard. But this year, the work has been tremendous. And I think two things I wanted to say is that beyond what you do with the drive-through lines, there are lots of families that will call you and say, "Oh, I forgot it was Wednesday." And, you know, your staff will deliver to families who either don't have transportation or forgot to get there, and even students sometimes who need that help that are not too embarrassed to ask. So, that's the first thing I wanted to say. And, you know, the other thing I wanted to say is I don't think people realize until we had the pandemic and we closed down that schools provide education, social services, mental health services, healthcare, and food. And we, we are such a central part of family lives and children's lives. And I think it's been a huge wake-up call during this last period of time to see how vital the schools are for a community. So, I thank you.
Thank you. I had said to my staff in the beginning, we didn't need a pandemic to know how important we are, but the world needed a pandemic to know how important we are. But thank you for that. And a huge call out to Marty McKenna, who's been delivering through the rain, through the snow, to our families who might have been quarantining or might have been, you know, didn't have a car or just for whatever reason couldn't get to the food. We had a funny story today. We probably had, like, we do, we're still doing remote feeding for any of our families that are home remote during this time period of April 5th on. And about six families didn't come today, which really isn't, you know, common. So, I called them all, and I said, "Hi." And she's like, "Oh, it's Wednesday." And I go, "Doesn't a holiday just throw you for a loop?" And she says, "Well, my trash has been out for two..." So, you know, it's just like, everyone's so busy. And I said, "No problem. You know, we have a 9:00 pickup for all our families." She said, "We'll be out there at 1:00 for you." I'm just like, "I'll be there." So, thank you. And Wednesdays, it's, it's just tricky, because lives go so fast. And I, I used to get the calls at, like, you know, the voicemails or the emails at, like, 7:00 on a Wednesday night. "Oh," you know, you could just hear in the words, "I forgot." And I even had some high school scene, some high school students reaching out to me, "Mrs. Morgan, I forgot to come." Because we, we did have students come get food for themselves, which was pretty impressive. And we always were happy to deliver to their house on Thursdays, or they'd come and get it to, from us on Thursdays. But it's really important. And I thank you for saying that, because it's really important for families to remember that we're here to help, and we're here to just take the ease off. One of our fathers used to come every week. He goes, "This is just giving some sense of normalcy to our life." Like, my son, I never knew he liked chicken patty so much, but he just feels like, "Dad, get out of the way. I can make my own lunch. I'm set. I'm in. I got to get ready for my car." And just eating school food during Zoom learning was just, I remember our dad called me, he goes, "My kindergarten was so excited to have a carton of milk, because it never had the little cartons of milk, because they hadn't gone to kindergarten yet." So, but thank you. It's a, it's a big part of us, and, and we're really proud of our work that we've done. Go ahead, Bev. Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I personally want to thank you for taking the initiative to apply for grants on behalf of Milton families. This is not a community where people realize that there's a significant amount of food insecurity, but it made a difference for a lot of families. A mom pulled me aside to tell me her child had a food allergy, and that your staff took the time to understand specifically what the need was and come up with a series of menu auctions to support that child on top of feeding the hundreds of Milton families. Your team was organized, efficient, they were friendly. I, I could not have asked, and I don't think this community could have asked or imagined, for anything that you did. It was above and beyond what was expected. And I want you to know how much it was appreciated by me, who has not made a school lunch except for in the summers for the better part of a decade, to know that. I remember the first time I approached, I said, you know, "How do I use my, the, the credit that I had still sitting with the Milton Public Schools?" And you said, "No, the school lunch is free." And I, I literally thought, "Thank God. Like, I don't know what to feed three people for 10 months." So, please.
Sometimes I worry myself.
For those of us who don't cook, it is a big deal. But I do want you to know that beyond my family, it was above and beyond what anyone realistically should have asked. And to your point, our town is acting as though we have a community school with all of these services embedded, and we're not funded like one. But you took the initiative on behalf of our families, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lizzie.
I'll be brief, but it can't really be said enough times, I don't think. I also want to thank you personally on behalf of my family. I remember driving through the line in, like, single-digit temperatures, I don't know how many times. And that would be like the time I left my house that week. And I will never forget it, because every week, I was just like, "Wow, this is amazing." And we get home and open it, and Annie was learning French, first grade. She'd start to, like, point out what new vegetables we got, and if she knew it or whatever. It was just like such a highlight. And then she went back, and since April 5th, it's those turkey sandwiches. I'm going to tell her what you sort of described of how they get, because she'll think that's really cool. And she already actually asked me a couple weeks ago how I was going to figure out about making those over the summer, because she doesn't like the ones that I make at home as much. But the point is, yeah, so many people are so grateful, and we don't all get the chance to tell you, like, live in this public setting. So, thank you so much and to all your staff.
I will share that with them. Thank you.
You can thank me for having to stay late tonight, because I'm the one that said we need to bring Jackie Morgan in here and thank her and her team for everything that you did for us for over a year. And I know the families aren't all here to say thank you, but I agree with Lizzie. It can't be said often enough. I know the temperatures you were in. I remember Superintendent Jett, who, who joined you one of those days commenting on how rough it was out there in the elements. So, I just really thank all of you. And you made a difference to so many people in the community. And I can't say it any better than Ms. White, that, you know, the, it's so much a part of people's lives in a way that they don't realize until, until it's gone. So, really, really, really thank you so much.
Thank you. And I do have to say, as we met every Wednesday and we packed the bags, it was the highlight of our week, which I know, I know it's our jobs and we're paid. But, you know, during the pandemic, all you saw was your husband or your wife or your children or your grandmother, your mother, in your own home. So, I got to see hundreds of new faces every week. And you got to say, like, "Hi, how are you?" And people were giving me recipes and sending me pictures of, like, their gluten-free pizza that they had just cooked at home. Or one mother, every week, she was amazing. We were putting her on the blog with her recipe. She would make a shepherd's pie with the potatoes one week and put the carrots in. And it was just such a highlight. It, it really was something to look forward to. And, and, you know, every week, we got better. So, Mr. Jett, Superintendent Jett could tell you, the first few weeks, we might have backed up some traffic, we little bit of problem. We were down at the fire station, I was told. And I'm like, "Okay, we got to fix that. We got to fix that." So, we had three tables, and we went to four tables, and we finally went to five tables. So, we kept people off the main road, which was key. But I think that just kept going, because it was like the thing to do. Come on Wednesdays and talk to all the food service people. We had Superintendent Jett one day handing out, and it was a little chilly, handing out the food. And he came in, and he goes, "I'm sorry. I think I put a few of those boxes in the car, and I know you have a rule that you're contactless." And he goes, "I couldn't help myself," you know, because it's so good to see your families. It's so good to see people. And that was just real. So, we, we did stay off the main road after we got ourselves up to find tables.
Thank you. Me too. And, and it's amazing to me that USDA is going to continue to fund this fully through next year. That is really a wonderful thing. And I'm so pleased to hear that you're talking about offering this through the summer as well, which is just a, a wonderful, again, a wonderful thing for the community and so many families. I was wondering about the, the relationship with the Milton Food Pantry. Have they, did they function during the pandemic, do you know?
So, I know in the beginning, they were doing every other Saturday. And they're, they're run by volunteers. So, I think that's kind of hard as a volunteer to go out and risk your safety and be around people. And people were so, like, when we did our drive-through, it was contactless. We put your food on a table. We stepped back 20 feet. You got out of your car. You got your food. You put it in. So, we were trying to protect ourselves so we could keep coming and protect our, our families. So, you know, the, the food pantry, you know, you have volunteers. Sometimes it's, you know, some people, they all come. Sometimes they don't come. So, I know they struggled in the beginning, and, and they weren't allowing people to drop off donations, which was, we learned that early on, because it was a pandemic. And everyone was so afraid to touch anything. So, that's why we knew we had to swing into, into gear here. But I did understand that they were open every Saturday eventually. But I think some of their struggles is they don't have refrigeration. So, a lot of our, those big boxes and our, we, every time we finished, if we had leftover, we called the Council on Aging. And between Winter Valley and Unquity House, we delivered leftover boxes to them, or they came and got the boxes. And I wanted to do it to the food pantry, but when you don't have refrigeration, it's hard to hold all this produce. And I will tell you a quick little story. A round table like this, you know, the Unquity Room, where my grandmother lived for many years, their activity room was closed. So, they took all their tables, pushed the chairs away, and they would dump out all the boxes. So, this was all cantaloupes. That was all potatoes. That table was all melons. That table was all tomatoes. That table was apples. And they would have their, the people who lived in the Unquity House would make an appointment, and they'd come down with their reusable bag, and they'd go like it was Star Market. And they'd get their three potatoes, because they don't need a five-pound bag of potatoes. And they'd get their one melon. And we, we were able to help all of our elderly residents. And so, Winter Valley, because it was a little bit much sometimes, Winter Valley would do one week, Unquity House would do one week, and would rotate. And our driver, Natalie Ofrager, is amazing. And he would drive down to Unquity House and meet them and help unload, or he'd go to Winter Valley. Or sometimes they would come to us. So, not only were we able, and we are feeding families ages 0 to 21 this summer. So, that's really important, because summer food service programs are 0 to 18. But we have a seamless summer operation. Yes, I have this all down. We can do 0 to 18. I was here to 21. But with leftover USDA Farm-to-Family Boxes, we could donate them to anyone in need. So, it was a real win-win to help our elderly neighbors as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. You, Jackie Morgan, and your food service team are what I'm going to remember about the pandemic and your beautiful soul and what you did for people. That is what I'm taking away from this pandemic and how you made a difference every day for everybody. And we can't thank you enough. We really can't. So, thank you for coming tonight and for sharing your story. Virtual hugs and, and elbow bumps to your staff. And I know how hard food service works regularly, but you went above and beyond. And so. They really did. They have really knocked it out. And every time I ask any of them, I don't even, this is not, "Sure. Yep. Okay. How many?" Yep. Okay. We did a little leadership meeting the other day, and Superintendent Jett was going back and forth, because it's hard to have people gather from three to five, and they've been at work all day, and we don't have food. And we said, "Well, maybe we'll do smoothies, and they can just stick the straw under there." Under their little. And it, and it, we, and it was brilliant. I had, we had a little box of food to go. But it's just, those are the things that were all coming alive. It's all, I was going to bring smoothies with you tonight, but I understood it was masks on. Next. Because I love to bring food. Yes, we know. That's why we loved you, in addition to your beautiful soul. We love your beautiful food. Thank you, Superintendent Jett, for having Jackie come tonight.
And I just echo very quickly the sentiments that you guys held. Jackie and the team have done a tremendous job. And like you said, we didn't need this pandemic. As you know, I've always been very supportive of the food service program. In fact, they helped me keep my winter coat to get me through the winter.
Best customer. Best customer.
Best customer. So, I appreciate all that you do, and we look forward to continued success. So, thank you very much on behalf of the Milton Public Schools and the community.
Thank you. And thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to call up Dr. Fish and his team regarding the Pierce Middle School ELA and Math Acceleration Program, Level Review.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good to see you all. First, to approve the one more Jackie Morgan plug, even if she's not here. As a, as a principal, when we were rolling out the, when the hybrid program started back in September, and Jackie and her staff were doing the white bags, the to-go bags, we really made a push for have students pick them up, and really in a way to normalize, you know, taking over that free lunch. And within a few days, we were seeing, you know, hundreds of white bags leave Pierce Middle School on a daily basis, which was not only, you know, what we wanted, ensuring that all of our students who were, were going home for two days were able to eat and have two breakfasts and two lunches. But as a, as a MPS family, with my own four children coming here, to know that sense of normalcy of having that chicken patty, and just the lift that it gives your own house when you're not having to stress about who's having lunch, when you have two working parents and you're trying to keep it all together. I, I've said that to Jackie, but I want to acknowledge it publicly, because I think that there are a number of families in here in Beverly, when, you know, your experience with your family, it's, it's something that, to your point, Margaret, I think that that, that would be one of the shining lights that we, that we can recall as we move ahead, when we are moving ahead. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you here tonight to talk you through the progress that we've made on the, the review around the Accelerate Level Program, our classes at Pierce. Through, throughout this school year, we engaged in a review of our Grade VII and Grade VIII ELA and math classes. And you'll recall that those Accelerate Level classes were paused this school year following last spring school closure in the absence of any MCAS data or Common Assessment data that would have typically informed student placement. This review provided an opportunity to do a few things. One, to look more closely at student achievement and growth data over the past few years. Two, to collect insights from educators. And three, to examine practices. Two, to collect insights from educators. And three, to examine practices around things ranging from challenging students, supporting students when they struggle, and delivering curriculum that meets students where they are. Kat, Brian and I held an informational meeting for our Pierce families last week to share details about this process that we had engaged in throughout the year. And our goal tonight is to provide the committee with a summary of that presentation to answer any questions that you have. It's my understanding that you have the full, the full slide deck. But we think that we can hopefully illuminate a lot of that for you and answer any questions without having to go through a full, you know, full presentation. There were several values and principles that guided this review as well as our analysis of the data that were uncovered. And first, and these are the principles that I think we need to commit to and remind ourselves of when we think about any decision that we're making for our students, whether it be leveling, curriculum decisions, instructional decisions. And first is that as a school community, we need to remain committed to the belief that every student has the potential to grow and to succeed. And that we're able to realize this commitment when every student engages in the highest quality curriculum every day. Curriculum challenge, also when curriculum challenges every student to grow by offering multiple embedded opportunities for rigorous learning experiences on a daily basis. And when we have curriculum that gives each student varied learning experiences and opportunities to explore their interests. So at this point, I'll share some of the key takeaways from our review of those, the ELA and math classes. And the first is that the advancements in Pierce's ELA and math curricula have positioned us as a school to meet the needs of a broad range of learners in mixed-level classes. Second, these recently adopted research-based curricula, both in ELA and math, incorporate strategies to accommodate learners ready, both ready for more in-depth study as well as those who are in need of more support. And we have been and we will continue to provide our teachers with the professional learning experiences they'll need to incorporate these strategies as a regular part of their practice. Next key takeaway is that, to be frank, the practice of leveling at Pierce has not impacted students' achievement or growth in any material way. Grouping students by achievement level has not led to improved outcomes for students. And finally, as a school, we plan to move forward without reinstating those accelerated level classes. Rather, to augment students' learning experiences and to attend to the special and specific interests that students may have, we will refine our ELA and math intensive study exploratory classes to offer additional enrichment opportunities in these content areas. So throughout this presentation, we'll share with you some of the elements of the review that inform this decision. But I think it's important for us to take a look at the ELA and math curricula and some of the exciting things that have happened over the course of the past few years. And I'm grateful tonight to have two of my right hands, Kat Teroche, K-8 Literacy Director, and Brian Seelig, K-12 Math Director, to talk you through and to bring you up to speed on some of the exciting things that have been happening at Pierce. So we've adopted over the course of the past few years curriculum resources, both in ELA, and that's the Amplify Curriculum Program, as well as in math, and that's the Illustrated Math Program, both of which are noted for their quality, their rigor, and their adaptability. And at the center of each of these research-based programs is the prevalence of what we call embedded opportunities to both stretch the learning for students who are ready for more complex content, all while scaffolding learning experience for students who may require more support or more instructional interventions. So this time, I'm going to introduce Kat and Brian to provide some insights into the curricula and its capacity to meet a broad range of learners in heterogeneous classroom settings.
Thank you. Hey, everyone. It's good to see you all in person.
You too.
I hope I'm doing this right. So I'm going to go over some information that you're likely already familiar with. But for the purpose of being comprehensive, I'm gonna do it anyway. So in 2019, 2020, as you know, Pierce Middle School underwent a curriculum review, which is typical of most curricula. A lot of you are in education. You understand from time to time, we review curricula, its impact on student learning, and how it's actually being implemented in classrooms. From September to December, we engaged in this review, looking at internal data. We did 36 classroom observations in grades four, five, and then six through eight. We looked at the existing curriculum and then really did a deep dive into the current research and the practices of adolescent literacy instruction. January to May, we reviewed four of the leading national curricula for middle school literacy. And at that time, we used a rubric. So this was all the ELA department, all teachers, six through eight, myself, Dr. Fish, Assistant Principal Janice Mizzola. And through that rubric analysis of those four curricula, Amplify was selected by that group. In the spring, we engaged in professional development led by the company, and then we implemented in the fall. We've engaged in two cycles of company-led coaching and professional development with Amplify. And teachers have been completing an implementation tracker in order to identify pressure points that we need to refine as well as strengths of the program as we look towards a full year of teaching next year. This year, as we all know, less than ideal circumstances with hybrid, remote, and/or in-person. But, you know, we got through at least four units in each grade, three or four units in each grade. So just to give you some high-level points of the curriculum, this information is linked on the Pierce website. It's also in your presentation if you have it digitally. And it's in the two-pager that went out to the community last week. But Amplify is rooted in engaging in thematic units focusing on all four instructional domains, reading, writing, literacy, speaking, and listening. There are highly rigorous texts in each grade level that develop in complexity throughout the year, asking students to engage with other perspectives or communities that they may not be familiar with. In a typical year, students engage with anywhere from 38 to 42 types of text. That ranges from novel study to excerpts from other fictional texts, nonfiction texts, maybe video clips, things of that nature. There are embedded opportunities to meet students where they are based on performance that teachers can access through data on the online platform that support and challenge students on a weekly basis. And that is a high-level overview of Amplify. I'm going to pass it over to Brian Seelig.
Thanks, Kat. Great to be with you. I'm going to talk a little bit about the changes to the math curriculum at Pierce over the past few years. Thanks to the determination of the teachers in the math department, my predecessor, Michelle Cruiser, and under the leadership of Dr. Spalding as principal in the building, Illustrated Mathematics was adopted and implemented either two or three years ago, depending on grade level. This curriculum was chosen because it was the highest rated among all available middle school math curricular resources at the time and still to date with one notable exception that I'll talk about shortly. This is not a coincidence. The founder of Illustrated Mathematics is also a co-author of the Common Core Standards for Mathematics on which the Massachusetts math frameworks are based. And so it comes as no surprise that this program aligns to the math content and practice standards better than any other out there. What makes Illustrated Mathematics unique is, for one, its rigor. Rigor is defined by the triangulation of procedural fluency, conceptual understanding, and application. And the Illustrated Mathematics curriculum features an appropriate balance of all three. Students are invited into the mathematics in the curriculum through a series of instructional routines that begin each lesson, that include which one doesn't belong activities, notice and wonder activities, and others similar. Through this, students begin to understand and appreciate that math isn't only about getting the right answer or getting the right answer quickly. Through the lessons, there are various scaffolded, problem-based tasks that students engage in. And as Dr. Fish alluded to in his introduction, these tasks are designed with students across the learning spectrum in mind. There are scaffolded strategies offered to teachers to use for successful implementation with ELL and students with disabilities or any student struggling to access that material. But there are also, within every lesson, opportunities to extend the learning for students who are ready to do so. The tasks, the lessons in the Illustrated Mathematics curriculum are designed for a mix of whole-class, group collaborative learning, and independent practice opportunities. And in the Illustrated Mathematics curriculum, the role of the teacher shifts from one in which they are leading direct instruction with students passively following along, to one in which the students are actively responsible for playing a role in the learning while the teacher is facilitating, supporting, and ultimately synthesizing the key ideas from that lesson. The only disadvantage that Illustrated Mathematics has going for it is it is a largely paper-based curriculum, which is especially problematic during a pandemic in which there is a significant, was and has been a significant amount of remote learning happening. And so because of this, again, thanks to the termination of the teachers in the math department at Pierce Middle School, we have, for this year, been transitioning to what's called the DESMOs math curriculum, which is a technology-enhanced version of Illustrated Mathematics. It features many of the same things that I described earlier. It follows the same sequence of units and lessons. It aligns just as well to the content and practice standards. Features the same instructional routines, but it offers a more dynamic opportunity for students to explore the mathematical ideas and for teachers to facilitate conversation around those ideas with built-in tools for teachers that include the ability to pace lessons, to provide direct individualized written feedback to students within the platform, and to snapshot student responses to enhance discussion. So it's a little bit confusing, but technically speaking, we are in transition and will be fully implementing DESMOs across grades six through eight. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that that is really just a technology-enhanced version of the Illustrated Mathematics curriculum for which we have the highest of rating and support as being the top curriculum option out there. And I'll just close by sharing a quote that I used with the ninth-grade class that I've been teaching since we got back from April vacation, which is that "math is beautiful and not to be rushed." All right, Bill?
Thank you, Brian. Now, what I'd like to do is to just take the committee through some of the key findings that emerged from the review with a specific focus on the data. And the review that we undertook was done in three prongs. The first was an analysis of quantitative student assessment data, so effectively MCAS data over the course of the past few years. The second was an analysis of qualitative data, which were collected from teacher focus groups. And the third was an exploration of research studies and articles. And so to take a look, again, this is high-level, look at the quantitative data. I do want to thank and acknowledge V. Vu, who was instrumental in helping us to pull together the data and to sort of just talk through with V. and problem solve, what exactly are we looking for? How do we want to start? And like, data analysis is a really iterative process to be, so you may start in one place and find yourself in another. And V. was a huge ally in helping us to find the data and to analyze the data in a way that made sense. It was easy to understand, or easy enough to understand. So when we look at the quantitative data, one of the things we looked at was a series of scatter plots. And I know that they're in your, they're in your packet. And one of the observations that emerged from the observation of the scatter plots is that when you compare the sixth, the growth and achievement on a horizontal and vertical axis of the sixth-grade students who were grouped heterogeneously, so without leveling, to the same, to a scatter plot of seventh grade or eighth grade, the distribution was almost the same. So you saw no, so very, no very, almost no variation in whether the students were leveled or unleveled. So we did that. And, you know, there's always going to be a few blips on the radar, but in general, the theme that emerged from there was that the distributions were the same whether students were grouped heterogeneously or whether they were leveled. The next layer of analysis we did was what we call the cohort analysis. And what we were able to do is look at the Pierce Middle School experience for an entire group of students from when they were in sixth grade, the same group in seventh grade, and then the same group in eighth grade. And what came of that was, in almost every occasion, when the students were in sixth grade and they're, they were grouped heterogeneously, they were not grouped by ability, there was a higher percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations on MCAS than in any other of their subsequent years when they were leveled. We actually saw a dip in the proportion of students who met or exceeded expectations following them being grouped. And then the third, and one of the most eye-opening pieces for me, and I think that Brian and Kat would agree, we did another cohort analysis where we looked at the students who had been exclusively in the accelerated level classes in seventh and eighth grade, or just in seventh grade, depending on the year of data. And what we saw when we looked at their growth, that student growth percentile, the SGP, we often hear about when we report MCAS, MCAS performance and growth, is that their growth actually either leveled off or declined in, through their experience in the accelerated level. So those were a few different aspects of the quantitative data that we looked at. Another really integral aspect of the data collection analysis was qualitative data. We conducted focus groups with our grade six, grade seven, and grade eight ELA and math teachers throughout the course of the winter, just to glean their perspectives. These are the people who are teaching these classes. These are the teachers, the people who are teaching our students. And some of the themes that emerged from those discussions and from the analysis of the discussions that was, the most prevalent one was a sense of skepticism that teachers held around the practice of leveling. Reasons for that skepticism were two or threefold. One is that, you know, they articulated that the curriculum for the accelerated level was effectively the same as it was for the standard level class. So the practice of leveling was more a practice of grouping the highest achieving students into, you know, one section on each team. Teachers also felt that the recent curriculum enhancements that Brian and Kat have spoken to have created higher expectations for all of our students. And finally, in thinking about this through the lens of students' social-emotional development and sense of self, almost to a person, teachers believe that leveling can be damaging to students' identity as learners. And I hear, I hear Brian speak often about, he'll use the phrase, "math identity is real", in this, this sense of who you are as a math learner is, can, can, for better or for worse, shape how you, what you think about yourself and what your capacity is to learn. Some of the other takeaways from the analysis of the educator input was that, that again, that the newly adopted ELA and math curricula, with the embedded opportunities for differentiation, provides spaces to meet the broad range of learners' interests and abilities in a heterogeneous space, all in the same classroom. And one of the interesting things that came out of this too is because we had made the decision to pause the leveling, teachers had the experience of teaching unlevelled classes this year in seventh and eighth grade. And one of the common threads was that even without having the accelerated level classes this year, teachers were seeing students benefit from high levels of engagement as well as from the diversity of learners that were in the same classroom space. And then the third prong of our review was looking at what others have been writing and studying in a more contemporary way around the practices of not just leveling and de-leveling or differentiation intervention, but, you know, what are enrichment opportunities. And what we saw and what we came across was much in line with this decision and what much in line with what the opportunities and the capacity that we believe we have. So the review of those articles and studies yielded a number of practices and recommendations for schools that included, from national organizations like the National Association of Secondary School Principals calling for the organization of students in heterogeneous learning groups, citing that the diversity of learners in a single space can benefit all learners. An emphasis on providing rigorous academic curriculum for all students that leads to a focus on supporting teachers to implement the curriculum that focuses on depth rather than speed. And that's a conversation we have often about, you know, in theirs, I know Brian can speak to it too, but there's, there's an emerging push to sort of move away from going faster and getting to some, getting to the destination point sooner and more about getting, about depth of understanding and generating, you know, command of concepts and standards, which I think about as a former math teacher, when we talk about one of the strengths and one of the, I think, sources of pride in the scope and sequence of Milton Public Schools' math curriculum. in the scope and sequence of Milton Public Schools' math curriculum is that the number of students who have the opportunity to take calculus. Well, if we're develop, we're further developing their command of algebraic concepts, which are the foundation of calculus, then we're going to be well, we're going to be positioning our students, not just because of their experience in six to eight, but that mindset of depth over acceleration. And then finally, I think the one that resonated most was that from the, not most, but significantly is the National Council of Supervisors of Mathematics, so that, you know, Brian's national organization calling for the detract, heterogenous math instruction through, even through the early high school years, that meets students where they are and supports them with high-quality instruction that enables them to develop powerful habits of thinking. Additionally, some of the other research and articles we looked at were also framed around enrichment. You know, where are our opportunities to enrich? And there's different, there's a myriad of different ways to go at it. And some of them are really just around identifying what are students' interests and strengths and then in creating groupings, projects, you know, service projects around that that also can connect students through common interests. And that's where the, through the recommendation of, sort of the decision to move away from the accelerated level, but really looking at our exploratory offerings, both in ELA and math, and in creating a space for that child who is a voracious reader. And we, you know, to be able to bring another group, a group of voracious readers to come and have an intensive study class on adolescent literature, or writing, or debate and public speaking. There's a lot of upside to being able to bring, and similarly with math, to bring students together in that enrichment space around common interests and strengths. So that's sort of like the summary of the three-pronged approach. The takeaway is, and just in terms of moving forward, it's sort of next steps. As we move forward without reinstating the accelerated level classes, we need to, we remain committed to that belief that I started off with, that every student has the potential to grow and the opportunity to succeed. And we're able to actualize that commitment when every student is engaged in the highest-quality curriculum every day, when our curriculum challenges every student to grow by offering multiple and embedded opportunities for rigorous learning experiences every day. And then when curriculum gives students varied learning experiences and opportunities to explore their interests. Additional next steps include, but I mentioned earlier, about to augment students' learning experiences and attend to some of those really specific interests and needs is to refine our exploratory offerings for both ELA and math in grade seven and eight, to really welcome students who have that keen interest or that keen drive to come together with other students who share that and to do some really cool and creative things that are more in line probably with, with the personalized learning strand that we speak often about. And finally, we will need to continue to define and secure the professional development experiences for our ELA and math teachers that focus on ensuring rich and rigorous learning experiences for all of our students. So thank you for the opportunity to, I hope, I hope it was helpful to take the summary approach. It took an hour and 15 minutes to go through the slides when we presented to families.
Yeah, so members of the committee, Betty?
Sure. You spoke about student growth percentage. And you said that at some point you noticed that it was like flattening and even going down a little bit.
Yep.
Was that in both ELA and math? And was that based on MCAS data or other data as well?
In both ELA and math, both based on MCAS data. And one of the, I'm glad, I appreciate you bringing up the question, Betty, because one of the, I think misconceptions about growth when we're talking about MCAS data, and you know, a few, a few people reached out to me and asked me about this, is if, if the highest achieving students, wouldn't the highest achieving students naturally have less growth? Because their, their starting point is higher. What SGP measures is not one student's growth compared to his or her or their own growth on a previous assessment. It's their growth in relation to other high-achieving students across the state. So what we were seeing was, you know, if you, if you think about the continuum of, you know, first percentile to now ninth percentile, even those highest achieving students are going to fall across that, that continuum. And we were seeing our students below that sort of, it wasn't, I mean, don't get me wrong, it wasn't anything, you know, alarming, but we weren't seeing, we were seeing a dip from, in their growth through seventh and eighth grade in the accelerated level.
I have other questions too, but I feel.
Go ahead, go ahead. If you want to ask, go be my guest.
I was just going to ask you, I think you sort of answered it, but when you talked about the exploratory classes or intensive studies as an option for kids to be more challenged, are you, it's not specifically a separate course. It's more a design that you might do within the class for a group of students who might have a particular interest or passion for a particular part of math or, or literature?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a little, it's, I would, I would hesitate to say that they would need that to be more challenged. Because like we're saying, we believe that all students are going to be challenged through, in this approach. But where, in the way that a student who plays the violin, you know, studies strings as, as their exploratory, the student who is that, who is that, who's reading a book a week, or who is doing pre-engineering things on their own and they're doing, they're coding on their own, like having, building exploratory classes that are tailored to those, those really specific interests and then bringing students together who share that interest as, as the exploratory, as the exploratory offer. So it would be, it's in addition to their core grade seven or grade eight math class or ELA class.
And the other thing I want to ask you, and this goes back a while, is, you know, when my son was leaving fifth grade to go up to Pierce for sixth grade, the teachers recommended whether you be put in a, which class he went to, like for English and for math, but a parent could always override that, that teacher input. And I'm just wondering, that was, you know, many years ago.
Oh, yeah.
You know, early, like late 200s, you know. So I'm just wondering, has that been the, has that still been the practice? Or have things changed in the last maybe 10 years about how you place students?
So the placement from, there has been, this is not the first time that looking at leveling and how leveling happens has taken place at Pierce. There was, and Dr. Spollin can correct me, because under her leadership, that, that initial step was taken, where the, it was teacher recommendations, but parent guardian override. My, you know, seeing it from afar as a latecomer, it really, what it ended up being was the above-level classes where the students, where filled with students whose parents, who were, you know, rightfully recommended for it or whose parents may have known how to game the system to get them into, into the, into the above-level classes. So there, the subjectivity that comes with that is, I think, is a challenge.
Yeah.
And the leveling, the move from that to where we had been was really, was all driven by MCAS achievement and students' achievement on common assessment, common assessments. So there's, it's probably a longer discussion about like the evolution of how that happens and the potential challenges. But yeah, that, this is, this is not the first time that Pierce has looked at a shift or move away from the, the way that things are leveled.
Beverly, sure.
You go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Lena, answer your hand.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions. None of these should be earth-shattering to any of you. But I want to first thank you for taking the time to have a comprehensive look at both the quantitative and qualitative data to make an informed decision about what makes sense for the families in Milton. I think a lot of people in the community may not understand that it was almost an eight-to-10-month effort, but I want to say thank you. First and foremost, you mentioned that in order to fully implement the curriculum as intended with both accelerated and supports, in the Amplify program, it sounds like you're a year in. You've had some professional development, but as both of you have mentioned to me, an adoption takes several years. And I want to make sure that the resources and the time are allocated to pay for the professional development and the ongoing coaching, because I don't want to see this effort, all this time and interest, go for naught if we don't allocate the appropriate resources. So that's a question and a statement. But here, all jokes aside, I just want to make sure that as a district, I know there's a PD budget. I don't know what's, what money's been earmarked for, but I don't want this effort to go to waste. Second, in terms of the intensive study courses, I know that this is the conclusion of a year-long work, so there's probably some planning that has to take place to determine what those courses will be. Do you have an estimated timeline of when you anticipate the first set of Pierce students will be able to see those intensive study opportunities in both math and ELAs? Is it fall 2021, which I doubt, but maybe fall 2022? What are you thinking?
Fall 2021.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Fall 2021. And the, the way that we've discussed, you know, because we see an opportunity for the courses like that to be really driven by student interest and choice. So by, you know, our, our approach is, is in describing for families what these classes are, is to emphasize the interest, you know, the student interest piece of it, and then working, like we were, in our most recent conversations, Kat's putting together a course description. You know, the course is designed for, intended for students who wish to, who have a keen interest in English language arts. And topics will include, right, adolescent, you know, intensive, you know, adolescent literature, in which case, you know, we're thinking about reading at higher levels, right? Like when we think about the Lexi scores of different, of different texts. But also, it's not just reading, it's not just, you know, but how do we both, then we can also have opportunities for creative writing, for public speaking, for debate. Some of the things that we, that are in place, but can, I think, have the upside to be ratcheted up to really push and enrich that experience for students.
And then my last question has to do with our wonderful scatter plots, which I spent a lot of time looking at. But I did get the punchline. But one of the things that concerns me are the kids that are still at the bottom of this. And I've asked this of other principals, because I realize it's not for lack of coming up with supports. I think at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level, whether it's special education teachers or Saturday programs or after-school programs, the district has gone out of its way to try to close that gap. But for some kids, there's, I liken it to the last mile on the internet. Like what is the last mile for those kids? And what does that look like? And years ago, I met someone from, I think it was MATCH. The founder of MATCH decided he was going to start MATCH Tutors. And that was the last mile for kids, because one of the districts they were working with implemented a math curriculum that wasn't a research-based. And he realized, we have years of students that actually miss math, and the only way to make up that time is X. I would love to see the district talk about, what does the last mile look like? We may not be able to get everybody, but if we can get more of these dots up, I think it's worth the effort.
Beverly, if we had the answer to that question, it would be like a miracle.
Yes.
But I do think we can get there. I think, just speaking in my experience at Tucker for the majority of my time in Milton, and now at Pierce, we do a lot of digging, curious questions, you know, what is it we're missing? Is it mentoring? Is it connections? Is it, you know, I always go back to that zero-to-four age group, you know, what, how can we make sure we're connecting with all kids far before we necessarily see them? And not to say, you know, but then once they're here, you know, what can we do to mitigate as well? And I, I'm glad that you highlighted that, because I think that is, that is the ultimate question in addition to the millions of others. But always, you know, how can we continue to lift students up and make sure that we are getting them what they need?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I've heard from some parents who are concerned, I'm sure you have too, about dropping the accelerated level. And I think it might help to address their concerns, assuage their fears, whatever it might be, to really talk in a nuts-and-bolts way about what it means in a, in a grade-seven ELA class, grade-eight math class, to, to, as you said, challenge all the students in the class at the same time. It's a really difficult task for a teacher to meet. And so to, to just say a little bit about how that might work in a class so that the kids who are quick at picking up on what's going on are challenged during that class at the same time that the students that Beverly was just addressing are having their needs met and, and everybody is, is staying on task, so.
It's a really great question, and also one of the ones that's a constant conversation. I can speak more closely to K to eight, you know, high school I'm not as familiar with. So for example, if I'm thinking about the Amplify curriculum, you know, the 42 texts that I referenced earlier, in no way does that mean they're reading 42 novels. The instruction of literacy has changed a lot in the last 20 years, 15 years, where we're asking students more realistically to engage in complex texts where you're comparing, contrasting, connecting, finding a visual text or a visual, you know, video or excerpt from a news clip, and then you're relating that to Frankenstein and what the themes might be similar. So in terms of that push level, I'm picturing teachers using the data dashboard from the curriculum of a week's long study, anywhere from academic language and vocabulary to the writing prompt and to the accuracy in a reading comprehension activity, and making not static, but fluid groups. So week-to-week, there are flex days built into the curriculum so that on day five of every week, that teacher can say, okay, you know, I sent a Google message to, you know, four of you. You're going to work in the back corner. Hopefully, once we can be a little closer together, you're going to work in the back corner. This week, we didn't read chapter six, because it's not part of this structured lesson. But what you're going to do is you're going to read chapter six, and you're going to come up with an alternate ending. And then I can pull that other group that really is struggling with some of the one part of that lesson in, in a group by myself, and then another group can be working together on a different lesson. And so, you know, when I think about, as Beverly mentioned, that three-year sort of, you know, where we're going to be really comfortable with the texts and really comfortable with the pacing of this very new approach, new to us, to literacy instruction. I see it as being, and it's not elementary in pedagogy, but it might look that way, but students working collaboratively to come up to solve a problem with really high-level material. And the reason, you know, this, this curriculum does have some high-level material and some really, a lot more complicated texts than I think some people have been used to. But the reasoning is, it really gives the opportunity for a teacher to scaffold it for students who might not be there yet, but also to give those other students who are there the opportunity to independently access some of that text with support from the teacher and engaging activities. So that, that's really how I see it playing out, and I hope that.
Good, thank you.
I'd offer a similar response for math, which I know kind of maybe seems a little, maybe unfamiliar. But I believe that we are working toward a instructional model that maybe resembles more of what you typically see at the elementary level in our middle school classrooms at Pierce for math. Again, built into the curriculum itself are these opportunities within each lesson for students who are ready to do so to delve more deeply. And so there is the opportunity for teachers to designate those portions of the task for students who have shown sort of understanding of the base level of concept while they are providing support for the students who need it to reach that base level. So it's very fluid, and it does, you know, it's, it's built within the lessons themselves. But I also want to be sure to acknowledge this concern and not to be disingenuous that this is something that is already a well-oiled machine in our math classrooms at Pierce. It goes to the professional development that, remember Ross Denny brought up a little while ago. This is a, this is a journey that we're on. What I speak to you today with confidence in saying is that we have the right pieces in place. And also to say that, for all the reasons that Dr. Fish spoke about, those concerns wouldn't just disappear if we instead presented a plan to reinstate the accelerated classes as they were prior to this year.
I think I could just, Dr. Krack, I have one more thing. I think that one of, you know, you mentioned families you may have heard from who are concerned in asking, you know, curious questions, and that's understandable. I have as well. But I think one of the things that I've taken away is that there has been, there's been, there's an assumption of what the accelerated level was, and the belief of what it was, was in really different than it actually materialized in practice. I mean, it wasn't necessarily accelerated. It was ability grouping. It was put the highest achieving students into, into, you know, a cohort, and effectively struck down the same grade-level standards in the same curriculum. So, the, the comment or the assertion that we are somehow taking accelerated work away from students is actually, like, that's a, I, I get it comes from an emotional space for some, for some folks, and that's, that's fine, that's understandable. But if we're being real, the, the, the practice was more about grouping by achievement versus grouping with the intention of truly accelerating or deepening students' progress.
Thanks.
One of you, go ahead, go, either of you.
Thank you. This is great to hear, hear from you directly about this. I, I also heard from some parents who are, have some concerns. And, you know, I think your description of what would go on in the classes and how the teacher's role is changing in these classes to more of a facilitator than doing the direct instruction, that, that, that helps make a lot of this possible. But I do share Beverly Ross Denny's concern about, you know, how, how are we going to support teachers to become prepared and comfortable in that, in that new role? But I think it's, it's really what we've been talking about in strategic planning around personalized learning. And, and it's, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's happening. And I'm glad to hear that you've got the curricula that you feel is ready to take you where you want to go, which is great. And, and I agree, though, that I think we just need to be sure that we have the supports for the teachers to get, get there and, and doing that work. And I also was glad to hear your comment, Mr. Fish, about algebra and, and how it prepares, like, some of the work that you're doing, perhaps a deeper level in middle school makes kids better prepared for higher-level courses when they get up to high school. And I know that was a concern of some folks that I've heard from, is that, you know, will they be ready for higher-level work if, if they haven't had opportunities in middle school? But I was pleased to hear your, your response to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lizzy, go ahead.
Thank you all so much for the, just how comprehensive and clear, and actually, like courageous, I feel, your leadership is on this. And I am now feeling really excited for what I hope will be an opportunity to go visit the Pierce in the fall, to kind of see some of this in action. As you were sharing the framing of this in the best practice, and what the research in our field tells us is best for learning and kids, like, that, that framing is something that I really hope our entire community, and especially parents who have understandable questions about the change, anytime there's such a large change to the model, like, you would hope that parents would have questions about it. But this year, we've heard a lot of folks talking about, we need to be making decisions based in evidence, based in data. And this, that's exactly what this is. So, I'm really excited that we're trying this, we're moving in this direction, that we're doing it based on these two very thoughtfully chosen curricula platforms. And I feel strongly that we need to just give it an opportunity to play out and be successful. You know, a lot of times, in schools and districts, we see this churn of initiatives and sort of a turnover before we have the chance to watch our investments of time and effort in different models sort of, like, get us the results that we're looking for. So, I do kind of wonder, and I'm anticipating, I guess, you know, this isn't something I would have expected as part of this conversation, but what would we be looking for, like, next year in terms of our qualitative and quantitative data? Kind of how will we know that this is moving us in the direction that we want to go? You know, I'm thinking about last meeting, talking about the Student Opportunity Plan, like, what you were talking about, Bev, with the, those sort of students on, on the lower part of the scatter plots, like, having that be a connected conversation as we go forward is, I think, really good. But also, that part about the students who may have formerly been in the accelerated classes, and how are they doing? And, you know, how engaged are they? And, you know, what is their growth? And all of that. So, that's just a rhetorical question, I guess. And I look forward to kind of the follow-up on that. And then, just a more concrete question around the exploratory model, because I'm so excited about that. That's going to be available to all students, right? So, I love that because having come out of, I think, a more fifteen years ago model of teaching ELA, like, there was this idea of enrichment being accessible to the students who were already higher-achieving, which, you know, it, it is really something that we need to provide to all students regardless of their outcomes on MCAS. And I'm excited for that opportunity for all students to access that. And I, I will stop there. But I, I'm just very, I'm excited to see this in action, and the idea of those weekly assessments embedded to inform how the curric, like, the teaching is adaptive in real time to how students are doing. I mean, that's what we, that's what we know works. So, I just, you know, thank you. And I will just put the last plug in for the PD.
Go, please. More.
Because the teachers do need the PD.
Yeah, no, yeah.
And we have to keep talking about it every time we're talking about the budget.
Yeah.
You know, every time we're talking about the connections between this curriculum-instruction piece and equity.
Yeah.
You know, the execution and results will be as good as the fidelity of our implementation through support for teachers to make this shift.
Yeah.
Which I trust is ongoing already. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll just wrap up for all of us by saying thank you for this very thorough presentation. I will tell you that this conversation, and Betty can tell you this, goes way back, long before Superintendent, long before Superintendent Gormley, to Dr. Jafun, who was a prior superintendent in the district, who had thoughts about getting rid of leveling in its entirety. The way it was rolled out didn't go so smoothly in the, in the, in the community. But, and your thoughtful, carefully-presented data this evening supports the, the efforts that you're making. As an early childhood educator, you know that I believe in heterogeneous grouping, that it is the best way for students to learn. When you have all students mixed together, you, the students bring each other up, and they support each other. And as a parent of three children who went through this district, you know, a student who went up to Pierce who couldn't multiply when he left his elementary school, to a child who probably could have done calculus, right, when he went up to Pierce, I think that the, the, having students work together makes a huge difference. And I, I really, we, I support this. I'm speaking for myself just now. I think that the key in the community is just what everyone here has spoken, to support these efforts with continued data, continued evidence in the community, and then to track, to use a word we don't particularly love, but to follow these students through high school and see what, what it looks like in twelfth grade, right? And I think that you will win parents over. When you use words like accelerated and leveling, you know, high-achieving parents, they grasp onto that because they think you're giving your child, the children, more. But we're giving all students more, and that's our goal. That, that's what equity is. We're going to give everyone what they need, but we're going to bring everyone up to the highest level. We're not teaching to the middle or to the lower. But I do really, 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 really hope that we can really support the educators because this is very hard work. Differentiated instruction is hard, hard work. And I really want the teachers to feel that we're supporting them financially, and also socially and emotionally as we make these big shifts. So, thank you so much for this presentation. I don't know Superintendent Dr. Spalding, if you want to add anything.
I, I too would like to add a few of the sentiments, and I'll thank you guys for this thorough thing. But I want to take it a step further in terms of the budget. And I think in the first nine months of my tenure, there's been a lot that's been thrown on a break in terms of what needs to be done, from professional development and supports for SEL, for equity, for content-specific PD, for the programs that you guys are talking about, for technology. And oftentimes, people come or came to the Citizen's Peak and compared us with multiple different districts. And I continue to say, the grass is always green on the other side until you look at the water bill. And so, we have to support, we have to support the schools if this is what we want. And so, I thoroughly support it. I know this was a conversation that was had before, and I know we're not here to take a vote this evening. And I just ask those in the community to have those questions, as opposed to getting your feedback and your information from Facebook in conversations, reach out to those at Pierce who have done the work, reach out, ask those clarifying questions, and get the information directly from the source. Because I do think that there's a lot of misinformation that's out there, particularly taken from one to give to another.
Right.
And that, that's the biggest.
Misconception.
Yeah, misconception out there. And so, I applaud you guys for the work that you've done. I applaud your teachers for their commitments, especially all of the observations and things like that that you're doing, and, and getting the feedback from them. But I will, I will end by saying, it is also bigger than MCAS data and things like that. There's so many things that play into a student's success, academic success. And we have to look at the PD to support the whole job.
Correct.
And so, I, I do appreciate that, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Bravo. We'll see you again this time next year for, for, for an update. And please reach out if you need anything. All right. That was great.
So, next on the agenda is a conversation about the dual enrollment program that Principal Karen Kay, Milton High School Principal Karen Kay, who presented a couple of weeks ago, provided you guys with the information. I do believe there were several follow-up questions regarding whether pricing, I think she, I believe she answered that.
Mm-hmm.
It is a range.
Yep.
But at this point in time, I'd leave it open to members of the school committee to either ask additional questions. Hopefully, I could answer. If not, we'll get those answers for you, or if a member would like to make a motion, to make a vote.
All right, great. All right. Does anyone have any questions or follow-ups? So, the two, the two drafts are in front of us again. And essentially, what Principal Cahill is asking us, they will add this to the program of study. So, this will be an opportunity for students to be part of the program of study, which we will approve in its entirety at some point at the end, at the, in the summer. But this will be, these two opportunities at Curry and at Quincy College will be part of a program of study that students can participate in.
I'd like to, so we can discuss it.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the dual enrollment program with Quincy College as presented.
Okay.
I, I had some follow-up questions.
Yeah, yeah. We're just going to second it.
Can we get, we can discuss it after the motion is made.
All right. Great. Sorry about that. All right. There we go. All right. So, now the motion on the table is to discuss and perhaps approve these two dual enrollment programs. So, Beverly, you want to ask your, go ahead.
Yes. So, I have a question, a couple of questions about each one of the MOUs.
Yes.
When Principal Cahill came in, she talked about the courses being around $400.
Yes.
I noticed that in the MOU for Quincy College, that was consistent, but in the Curry College MOU, it talks about $375 per credit hour, and that the course is three credit hours. Was that an error in the contract?
I will have to double-check that, but I believe she definitely answered that. And I know it was primarily what she responded was primarily about Curry.
Wait.
Was that in, when you said she responded, was that?
I don't have the email in front of me, but I believe she responded to you, Beverly, on the same day it was sent. And if you didn't get it, I apologize. I don't have it in front of me.
And I just may have missed it, too. Offer pro-?
I was seeing the same thing, Beverly, that the, in number, number two of the Curry College MOU, it talks about the reading, writing, and research course. It's three credits. But right above it, it says $375 per credit hour. So, that means that the class would cost 1125, not 375. And so, I question that. And, and if I may, I also then further down, under Terms and Conditions, number three, it says a minimum of ten students would be required to initiate this course select, course sections associated with this dual enrollment program. And I'm wondering, do we expect to have a minimum of ten students doing this? It seems like a lot to me. But maybe in the first year. But if, if, if we can't generate ten students, it sounds like it wouldn't go based on, on this.
And I had a couple of more. So, one of them had to do with, will participation in the course count towards, this is Curry, will it count towards the minimum ELA requirements to graduate, or would it be considered elective? The agreement says successful completion shall be constituted by earning a minimum of a B minus on the final semester grade. For those of us who had illustrious college careers, is it an option, is it, is a C typical for passing, or is the B minus is an extra side of rigor, which it might be?
And I, I could share with you, I have all those questions. Dr. Spalding's asked her to send the email. Unfortunately, I don't have a computer in front of me.
That's okay.
Yes, we have those.
I'll wait. Because you, you know, you've seen them. I tried to send them in advance so it wasn't like a, hey, by the way. And then I just have a couple about the Quincy College agreement that I didn't send, but they're, they're straightforward ones. Will the courses be taught by MPS faculty? Because that's how it reads.
I, I believe Karen Cahill mentioned that, the Quincy College one, some of the courses will be taught by Milton.
Yes.
High school teachers here, but they will align it and look at our curriculum and blend it with their courses.
Right. That's what you said.
No, that makes perfect sense. I used to work for a PD company that had a similar setup. So, our staff were certified instructors at the university. The difference was, when the student paid the tuition, we got a portion of it because essentially, the university isn't doing any of the work except for maybe on the side of the, what's the office that gives you, the transcripts?
The registrar's office.
The registrar's office, and they give you the access to Canvas as a small fee. But we literally were compensated for giving them business because essentially, we're doing the work, and they're getting all the revenue. So, maybe there's a discount that Karen negotiated up further. It'd be nice to know if that was the case.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm just looking and reading again. So, I was, oh, you were waiting for an answer. I apologize. Go ahead, Ada.
Well, I'm just wondering with these questions, because I was also looking at the Quincy one, and it does, it looks like we use our staff to teach these. I think we might need to have these, some of these questions answered before we take a.
Yeah.
A vote. And I don't know what, in terms of timing and getting this done, if that's a problem.
So, we did have, Karen Cahill was going to be scheduled to be here, and unfortunately, could not make it. But we could definitely table this, and we could talk about it very briefly on the sixteenth. What I would do is, any of the questions.
I was going to say, can we write them down?
We would definitely, we definitely have. We definitely have them. Um, they were sent. I'm not sure.
I didn't, I don't think that I was copied on those, which is fine. I, you know, we shouldn't be, um, but, but if we could like make a Google Doc or something and write down the questions that we would like answered so that we know specifically what we wanna know so that Miss Cah- we can make a decision.
I would make sure that you have those by tomorrow.
It's, it's not easy. It's a little bit complicated.
Yeah, it's a lot there. I just went through it this afternoon, so I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. And I think that, you know, there's some things like thinking forward for, if we, if we agree that this is something we wanna do, then thinking forward for another negotiation the following time, what else might we wanna add, change, delete? I don't know, to Beverly's point about the compensation for educators, that's probably
No, for the organization. So, the way that
Right.
it was set up, it wasn't that the teacher got any more?
The organization.
The organization was given a portion of the tuition. But in this case, we're not a for-profit organization, but they might
I was just wondering.
give us the discount. They might say, the amount of money that I would have sent you if you were X organization, I will apply that as a discount on your tuition.
Okay, alright. So, if you all could just put them in a Google Doc or something and then let's send them to Ms. Cahill.
I definitely have, uh, all of Beverly's questions, with the exception of the last one that she just asked about that. And I would definitely make sure, uh, they're sent to every member of the school committee.
That's great. Or that's fine. Or you can just bring them the next time and we can discuss them at the meeting. That's totally fine. I, we don't, I don't need to. Just, just so that you have them all in one spot. That way, Ms. Cahill can answer them all. But I, I really appreciate this. Over the weekend, I was reading, um, in the newspaper that there's a charter school in Brockton that you can graduate from high school with your high school diploma and an associate's degree from Massa Sawyer.
Wow.
And I was like, well, that's pretty neat, actually. And I was thinking like Massa Sawyer and Bri- um, Bunk- Bunker Hill offer some really nice programming. Um, maybe for the future, we can think of those as well, um, because they have some really nice programming and it's very specific areas of study as well.
And we have high-quality courses here. So, if our teachers are certified to deliver the credit, yeah.
I think it's, I think these are great, incredible opportunities and sort of what we talked about, um, as part of our strategic plan in terms of opportunities and also, you know, lessons from the pandemic. Alright, thank you, Ms. Superintendent Jet. If you can get those, if everyone could get their questions in one doc and then Ms. Cahill can answer them, that'd be great. And then we can address them at the next open meeting. Alrighty, great. I'm sorry about that.
So, thank you.
Alright.
At the last meeting, it was asked about an updated enrollment.
Yes.
As of today, looking forward for the twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, as of today, the enrollment is four thousand three hundred and ninety.
Okay.
That's up thirty-one students from this current year at four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine.
Okay.
We currently have, uh, fifty-one students. I believe that, uh, currently is part of the Milton Public Schools, but in, out of district.
Okay.
And that could fluctuate or change depending on end of the year evaluations or move-ins.
Okay.
Um, or one of the things that I found interesting, even though the high school, the high school consists of four grades, the high school is only a hundred and sixty-one students more than the middle school. The middle school currently is, is really hovering around nine hundred and ninety.
Thanks, okay.
And the high school is a one thousand one hundred and fifty-one. And I think that's important to note. And the reason why I bring that up, the high school's a, falls a little bit lower. You have students that move on to Blue Hills Technical, uh, School for Trades. You also have students who are often recruited for their athleticism. Uh, then you have students that are going on to a private or parochial school and you often have students that go on to a different school because of legacy, legacy of religion. Uh, and so, you do see a little bit of a dip from the current eighth grade or even seventh grade. You know, some of the private schools, private or parochial schools, uh, private schools in particular have taken students as early as seventh grade.
Wow. Are we, are we looking okay for kindergarten and what about the split?
Kindergarten, we're, we're hovering around three hundred and thirty-seven students.
Okay.
We have seven students that are still, uh, in the process
Okay.
of, of, or close added into that. And then we have about seven that have not completed the process.
Okay.
That is as of today. That does not account for any last-minute move-outs, residency or last-minute move-ins.
Okay.
Um, and we anticipate, um, we might see a little bit of a variation just because with remote, we discovered, and I think some of you probably on the committee know that, we discovered some people actually moved out of Milton, but they were still in remote access in it. So, we did have to, uh, send them a letter at the end of this year, depending on the timing of when we found out. You could finish off this year, not to disrupt their academics, but at June eighteenth, you have to withdraw from the Milton Public Schools. And in order to be carried over, you would have to re-establish residency in the town of Milton. And when I say that, this is not your temporary students that happen to be going to a family house in the Cape. These are people who actually uprooted and moved out of the town and it came to our attention, uh, within the last month or so.
And how about with first grade? Are we doing okay with the split between, um, the two, um, program choices?
Strands. It's, I had that list. It's almost about, almost.
It's okay. No, okay. We're not gonna have to like
Actually avoided a lottery.
I was gonna say, we have to have a live lottery. Okay.
We avoided a lottery altogether and we actually have some seats at three of the four schools
Okay.
in the French immersion program.
Okay.
We have seats for English Innovation Pathways at all four schools.
Okay.
And so, um, for, for families who might still be registering moving into the district, we actually do have seats.
Oh.
Unusual.
Is that the first time since the lottery began that we haven't had to hold a lottery?
I believe so.
Wow.
Yeah. We were two seats over at Cunningham and now some volunteers and, and serve it and, yeah.
That's great.
Is it safe to say that, um, I know that there are capacity concerns at various grade levels, some worse than others? Is there a simple way to see how far over we are in terms of our capacity? Like, for example, if we know by what, by grade level, based on the teachers, how many students should be in that class? Is that three thirty-seven number really tight or is that three thirty-seven number okay? We're alright?
So, so the, for kindergarten, um, we have sixteen, um, with staff core and have space core at the moment, barely. Um, sixteen kindergartens at twenty-three students, for example, which is the three hundred and sixty-eight number.
Okay.
Um, so, we currently have the three hundred and thirty-seven kindergarteners. We have, um,
Seven and seven.
Seven, seven and seven in the queue. Um, we are getting close. It, it's early. It's still just June. So, um,
But right now, it's looking good.
Right now, we're good. Um, we have maybe fourteen empty seats. Um, and so, it, it, it's very close, um, based on past trends in terms of how many kindergarteners come into the town between now and, and September.
Oh, that's right, cuz people will move just so they can start in kindergarten. So, you're anticipating it's gonna go up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks for the clarification.
Bev, I'm having a hard time catching everything you're saying.
Oh, I know it's in the mask. I'm sorry.
And I think it's cuz we're like diametric, like way apart from each other and there's some air vent thing going.
And it didn't help that I had the mask on. So, basically, my question, now I can tell that I was really muffled. Sorry. Uh, not knowing if three thirty-seven was relatively close, over, under. So, it sounds good, but because people are gonna move into the district over the summer, it's, we don't have a lot of, um, wiggle room for more families, but more than likely, more than seventeen children will be here before September.
Probably.
So, we, we actually went as, we actually went as far as looking at the students who are moving back into it. If I were to break it down in grade one, for this coming year, we have twenty-three students returning in ten new. For grade two, we have twelve students returning, six new. Grade three, five students returning, no new students regi- at this point in time. Grade four, two returning, two new. Grade five, four returning, no new.
Okay.
Um, and then grade six, we have one and one, one returning and one new. That's as of today. So, which are factored in those numbers. Now, we all know that that could change considerably between now and, um, the start of the new school year. But we're monitoring it very closely.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay. Well, alright. Thank you so much. We'll, um, there's a lot of houses for sale in my neighborhood. So, like, I don't know. We'll see what happens. But thank you so much for that update and thank you for all the work around that. And I also wanted to extend my thanks to you Superintendent Jet and Dr. Spalding and, um, and Superintendent Dexter for working with those families that had, um, moved out of town, were remote and allowing them to finish the year remote and then to, to then leave the community after that. I think that was very fair and thoughtful. I know they were, some families were upset, but I think you handled that very well. And I think that, you know, they moved out, they'll finish the year and then they can make choices. And if they can get, if they come back to Milton, we'll happily welcome them back to the, to the school. So, thank you for that.
And if I could just close my report with a quick update, um, for the senior activities.
Oh, yes.
I think it's important to do that. Uh, last night, a very successful, uh, senior awards night, albeit different. Uh, the students still had their senior awards night. A little more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars were awarded to close to a hundred and fifty students out of the two hundred and seventy-four, uh, members of the class, which we, we thought was pretty good cuz it was definitely a little more than half of the student population was acknowledged, uh, last night. Uh, yesterday, um, they had their carnival on the lower field.
Oh, great.
We're very appreciative of Mother Nature holding off. In the field wasn't too saturated with water, but, uh, the kids enjoyed themselves. Today, they had their first rehearsal, um, for graduation, the graduation ceremony. The field is already set up. Jackie Morgan made reference to Stele and Rye during the pandemic. I wanna give another shout-out to Stele and Rye. They are, they are providing a breakfast. Typically, we would do a breakfast, a senior breakfast, uh, the Friday before graduation. They are providing every senior a ticket and seniors could go by and do a pickup, uh, breakfast from Stele and Rye. Uh, that's gonna take place on Friday. Um, so, there were a lot, there are a lot of things that are happening. One thing I do wanna mention and, and I say this to the view in public, I, I found out today, to, tonight might be the infamous scavenger hunt. I wanna make it very clear, this is not an activity that is condoned, supported or encouraged by the Milton Public Schools. But I put it out there for folks to know. And I did have the opportunity to speak to some of the seniors about it as well. Um, because we want the students to celebrate, but we want them to do it in a safe and positive manner that doesn't necessarily disrupt the community. So, I, I put it, put that out there. And then we're looking forward to graduation on Sunday, June sixth. I bring that up specifically for all of us who will be there along with families. Uh, the forecast is ninety degrees, ninety-three degrees. I wanna make it very clear, on the field, the turf field, it probably gets anywhere from seven to ten degrees warmer. Uh, so, we're encouraging people, uh, to wear sunscreen, wear a hat if they need to. Our students will be in caps, drink lots of water, bring their bottle of water. Uh, waters will be available at the graduation, but we, uh, we definitely wanna make sure that, uh, folks stay hydrated and be aware of the temperatures. Wear light-colored clothing, not light clothing, but light colored, colored clothing. Uh, and, and hopefully, folks will be, enjoy the, uh, the ceremony. But we're looking forward to it. And then followed by that will be the elementary, uh, moving, moving on days, which are all coordinated. Tomorrow's Tuckers. Um, but they also follow with a field day. So, they're celebrating the students and some of the schools did another activity in addition. I know that Cunningham did a, a movie night on the twenty-seventh. So, they're trying to find creative ways to celebrate, uh, the fifth graders moving on. And I know Bill Fish is thinking of doing the same with the eighth graders.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you Superintendent Jet and thank you to the leadership team for the creative ways that they are, um, finding to celebrate, um, the achievements of their students. Even though they might not look the same, they're still meant to be celebratory and they're joyous. And, you know, Michael graduated online last week when I was at school committee and it worked out just great. So, you know, I mean, it, it was, he had a great time and that was really all, it's about the kids having fun. I know it's hard for us parents sometimes to not physically be present all the time, but if your children are having a good time and celebrating their accomplishments, then, then that's really what it's all about. So, I thank everyone for their efforts around that. Alright, so, let's do a quick update for my, for me and all of us about, um, so, on the chair's report tonight are two items. The Milton School Committee Subcommittee's and then a little bit talk about our school committee retreat. So, again, in the packet is a copy of this current Subcommittee's and Advisory Committees. And then Beverly did send to me on Monday the description of the two, um, committees that she would like to add. And I, it's, but, so I got it, I received it on Monday, so I didn't have time to give it to, um, Charlene to post, to give, to put everyone's packet. So, I emailed it to everyone tonight and, um, she did a lovely, thank you Beverly for this wonderful expla- um, uh, description of these two advisory committees. So, I asked everyone to look it over. I'll have a chance to, um, speak to the superintendents about it. And then we can make it a formal vote on the sixteenth to add these two if we so, um, to the, uh, advisory committees. Um, one is called the Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee and one is called the Measurement, Evaluation and Accountability Committee. I was thinking and listening to the, um, team from Piers tonight speak that it would be a wonderful way to incorporate the work that they're doing uh, at Piers with regard to, um, the, uh, you know, change in the programming offering i- under measure- measurement, accountability and, and evaluation. I think that'd be a great way to keep track of things. So, um, I hope you all have a chance to look it over and then we can discuss it more in depth at our next meeting. And I, I'll talk to the superintendents about it as well. Uh, essentially, basically, the Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee would be to work with the, uh, assistant superintendents and the curri- and the curriculum coordinators and look at curriculum, do a, a, a regular, I don't know, Beverly, you wanna sort of talk a little bit about your description um, of the committee, so I don't have to ramble on and on. You know me.
Oh, let me take this off so you can hear it. It, it has more to do with the fact that there's a significant number of initiatives that are happening in Milton. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, I think there's an expectation that we are a full-service district when we are not. So, there's an idea of balancing out, um, the expectations as to what we should be focusing on. And it's not meant to be a full-on review of all of the work in curriculum instruction. We have a very large district with lots of moving parts. But for the major initiatives that have been identified, whether it was through, um, the data that V Vu and Dr. Spalding shared in the fall or the equity audit updates, anything that has to do with curriculum and instruction in those areas that have been made a priority, that we just have regular meetings to make sure that the community is aware of where we are and what findings, similar to what Dr. Fish shared today. Because I think there's a lot of good work going on, but a lot of people aren't aware. And there's an assumption that, um, either that it's not a focus or it's not happening, but just the idea of having some sort of regular interaction about the core business of what we do, I think should be a priority. Um, and the second committee on Measurement, Evaluation and Accountability has a lot to do with making sure that for the initiatives that are requiring a significant investment, that we are measuring our success by first identifying what does it mean to be successful in this initiative? What does it look like? And then creating the systems that will allow us to collect the data and track. And then ultimately, measuring whether or not we met our goal and reflecting on whether or something that we should continue to invest in after, as Lizzie mentioned, we've, we've put in the two to three years to see, does this work? Before we, you know, turn and pivot away from something that we've, we've spent a lot of money on. But if we don't have those systems in place and purposely review them on a regular basis, it's much more difficult to make those decisions as to what to continue to invest in and what do we move on from.
Right. And I think that these two committees will, um, perfectly align with our finance and policy Subcommittee's because if we have data and accountability and we are speaking to the community more regularly about what's going on and we're, we're talking about what's happening in the classroom, what's happening and we're showing, we'll have more support financially, hopefully, from the town for our initiatives. And then also, we can think about the policies that might, that we might need to change, tweak, adjust and refine as time goes on. So, I think that they're very thoughtful additions to our advisory committees and I look forward to, um, seeing how they unfold. So, we can, uh, everyone can have a chance to review the document and then, um, we can take a, an official vote at the next school committee meeting. If that's okay with everybody? Does that sound good? Anyone have any questions at the moment before we move on to the other committees?
And how, do you want us to get back to you by a certain time with which committees?
Yeah, so I was gonna actually ask, so I, I thought we'd take a, just a few minutes tonight. I did have a chance to talk to Beverly and, and Lizzie there, um, about some of their thoughts about what committees they would like to be on. And so, I, and I think that Elaine as well emailed, emailed me about that she'd like to stay on finance and still sign the warrant. Is that what you said? Yes, Elaine?
Yes.
And remind me again, what the, I didn't write it down, I'm sorry. What the other, oh, bargaining.
We believe we're gonna have to start bargaining, so that one.
Right.
And I'll serve on either facilities or, um, uh, policy, depending on where there's a need.
Okay, thank you. And, um, when I talked to Lizzie, she also expressed interest in perhaps policy. And even Elaine, she expect, expressed interest in bargaining.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Alright.
And then also in working on some of the, two of the new advisory committees, so, um, and then Beverly expressed interest in the advisory, curriculum and instruction and, and also on the town, school. Um, we didn't have the thing in front of us when we were, I was on the phone. Um, we didn't have the thing in front of us when we were, I was on the phone.
The consolidation committee?
Thank you, yeah, town school consolidation.
Does that, does that still exist?
It, it does exist, it's just been dormant.
Okay.
And I think there's a real need, especially given our financial uh situation, to um, to restart that. And that was the um creation of Mike Zulus. Um, so maybe he would be interested on, you know, on the town side of helping to put that together.
Okay. So, I think um we will reach out to Mr. Zulus.
Well, that and the finance. That and the finance committee.
And finance, that's right, she wrote that, I wrote it down here, it's my last one, finance. So, she expressed that as well. Um, and then Ada, if you want to think a little bit more, I know you still want to do strategic planning, is that correct, Ada? Um, and you can think about, and if the other ones that you?
Facilities and, yeah, and school building project.
Okay. Okay.
And finance, are, are we, will we continue to cross-post those?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll always cross-post finances because it gives us more flexibility in terms of um the meeting. But the official voting members.
But we have to have three voting members.
Right, we have three voting members. So, Beverly would like to be on it, I know um Elaine would still like to chair it. And then um Member White, did you want to stay on finance?
Yes.
Okay, so um I think if that's okay with you Ada, we can have Dr. Craighead um Member Ross Denny and Member White as the three voting members of finance, is that okay? Is that all right, Lizzie, does that sound okay to you? Okay, great.
Pop in and.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's very helpful, it's very helpful when everybody comes.
Yeah, I, 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 I think finance is probably, um, if everyone can attend, that'd be great. And then Betty, I re, you, I believe you also emailed me as well, and you, you did not, oh, maybe I'm just remembering incorrectly. But you want to stay on health and wellness, or? No. You can think about it if you want to. Um, and finance for sure, anything else that you're?
Facilities.
Facilities, okay.
And you and I signed up for transportation, which didn't really.
I know, I don't, you know, I'm thinking that maybe we are not going to do transportation. I will talk to Superintendent Dexter about that. A, and um we can see what we need to do about transportation and traffic, okay?
To be D A.
To be D A, exactly. So, I think that we'll have a good, and then I, so policy, I guess we're just going to have to figure out policy. Um, about what we want to do about policy, because I know um Elaine, you expressed interest in that, as well as Lizzie expressed interest. Um, I don't know that you want to chair policy in finance.
I don't mind, um, policy only meets once a month, correct?
Yes, yes, and we're a little behind.
That's right up my alley.
Okay.
Because finance meets every week, I don't know, I don't know if the viewing public knows, but finance meets more often than any other um committee.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so I think then we'll be in good shape for, I can type up something neater, yes. Oh, Lizzie, sorry, go ahead.
One, um, I didn't mention this to you before, but I'm also seeing this liaison to the Student Advisory Committee.
Ooh, would you like to do that?
I, I will do that.
Oh, my goodness, that would be wonderful. Because um they actually emailed me about something they'd like to bring before us before the year is over, which we only have one meeting, so um that would be great. Um, I think the students expressed in the debate uh that they moderated between uh, uh, school committee members that were running for school committee, they, 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 they expressed an interest in being more involved.
Yep.
So, I'm all for that. I think that'd be great.
So, that means we're going to need an M F E rep um because Kevin did it.
Oh, M F E, that's right. Maybe I should go back to my roots. Long ago and far away.
It's something we can, you know, just think about, talk about.
Yeah, we can discuss that. I will type this up more neatly and send it out to everyone. And then include the other two committees as well. And I don't know what we want to do about, about M P, so what about M P, M P E G?
Yeah, M P E G, I've been continuing to do that, so, yeah.
All right.
And, and, yeah.
And I was going to volunteer for the capital committee.
Oh, okay.
Because you, you're time-wise, you weren't able to do it, and since I'm retired, I have the time to go.
I went to all the capital meetings, so I'm oka- I'm okay, but you can do it if you'd rather.
Well, I was just going to say, if you, if time-wise it wasn't going to work for you, I was going to say, you know, I could do it.
You can do it, that's fine.
Okay. All right. All right. And then um there is the Inclusion Task Force, which I need to follow up on and see where we are with that.
How frequently, how frequently does the Inclusion Task?
The Inclusion Task Force met a couple of.
Once a month.
They were, I, they didn't meet quite once a month. I was supposed to be on the Inclusion Task Force this year, I was the worst member ever. Um, because it was meeting during the time when I was at school, and I would often forget, like, that I would still be at school, and they would be meeting, and I'd be like, oh, I was supposed to go to that. And it's a lovely committee, actually, a lovely working group, and they have a lot of initiative. I think they'd like to see come back into um, you know, back into play. I can reach out to them and ask them what their plan is for the upcoming year.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, I might swap that for finance.
Because it's been a task force that's been around for a while, so it has a different name. Obviously, it's not like an advisory committee, it's a task force. So, I don't know essentially what that means now, so.
What's security?
So, we used to meet about security.
The security was formulated under the, under a former member, Leroy Walker.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's not just part of facilities, it's something separate?
No.
It was something separate, we met probably monthly at one point in time, and sometimes a couple of months. But that's when we did a lot of the, the, the key swipes, the security cameras, panic buttons, and a lot of different securing, the uh night supervisor coming in. But uh, we did not meet at all this year, and actually, I'm embarrassed now that you just brought that up.
Well, I mean.
Former member Walker did reach out about maybe a month or so ago, asked if we were going to um reinstitute that. And I just didn't have the opportunity to really formulate a plan, because at that time, we were thinking about coming back to school.
Um, yeah, and also, we were in and out of the building, so, yeah. Mostly this year was about um COVID safety and security, so we can circle back about that. I just wanted to circle back about Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. So, Ada, I know you're going to stay on, Elaine, you were on that committee this year?
I was, but I was, like you, on inclusion, the worst possible member.
Okay.
The meetings would, were, um, you know, right when I finished, supposedly finished work down in Buzzards Bay, and it usually, I went over and I couldn't make the meetings, and it just was not great. So, I'd rather not do that again.
Yeah, okay, that's what, I, yeah, I understand totally. So, I, I guess if anyone else wants to join Strategic Planning, I know that Beverly had been on that as a member of our community. Now, she's a member of our community again.
I was just saying, just signed up for five, and I think.
Yeah, I think that's enough. I did have the first, Sheila would tease me about that TV show, The Brady Bunch, through Marshall Brady, she would always tease me. So, we can leave that for now.
Along those, along those lines, can I just say something? Because I was doing a quick calculation here. Um, with the two new proposed committees, which I, I totally agree, it would be great additions. We already have two Subcommittee, standing step Subcommittee's, four Advisory Committees, um, three town committees, um bargaining, and seven other assigned duties, like M F E rep, and signing the vendor warrant and reviewing it and all those things. With the two additional committees, I think that comes to like eighteen things, and there's only six of us. So, it's just a lot of stuff, and if we could look at things like the transportation committee and other things.
We would not go into it, yes, yes, okay.
That maybe we could either subsume into another committee, or something like that, if we could all just take a look at that, that would be.
Okay. That'd be good. I appreciate that, as you know, I tend to go overboard, so it's good to be remain there, thank you.
Maybe that's also something we could think about when we have our retreat.
Yeah, right, I think that's a great idea. All right, so thank you all for going through the list together. All right, so we need to decide on a, on a school committee meeting for July. Mr. Doctor Superintendent Jet, everyone here. I know that July is a, we usually have one meeting in July, am I, am I remembering correctly?
Yes, you are.
And then we have a meeting at the end of August.
Yes.
As a, as a officially welcome back, everybody. And then um we do need to figure out if we want to do like two half-days for our retreat, which I think is probably a smarter thing, do you all think that that would work? We do like two half-days, or you want to do one full day?
I think we only did one half-day.
One half-day?
We never did full days.
I've never since you've been here, oh, gosh, we used to have full days all the time, okay. All right, so let's start first with maybe a meeting in Jul- in July.
Do you want to do the twenty-first?
Does, how about the twenty-first of July? Is someone on vacation that week?
I may be, but we have the capability of coming in remotely, or, we're, we're not going to find a date when everyone could be here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty-first works for me.
Okay. I know that, and that's true, we can always do, we can always hold it remotely too, if that, if that works for all of you.
Yeah, that might be good, yeah.
Right, July twenty-first. Does anyone know, like, I know the governor's going to suspend the state of emergency on the fifteenth of June. Does anyone, has anyone heard if he's going to also suspend meetings happening remotely?
Uh, I believe that was extended through September.
I think it was extended, it was extended through September.
Oh, wow, that's great.
September fifteenth, yeah.
Thank you, okay. I wasn't sure, I hadn't heard.
On, it's on the table to be extended indefinitely, which would allow us to have a longer-term conversation about, you know, how to potentially move forward with a remote opportunity for the community to be participating and so on.
Right, okay. So, does everyone think July twenty-first, which is a Wednesday, would work for our school committee meeting? Okay. All right. And then, I know that some of you emailed me with dates in July that you are not available. And that, I think, some, like, some, I know Lizzie said that she's, has a larger commitment at the beginning, right, Lizzie? Was it the beginning of July?
It's actually the last week of July.
Oh, the last week, I apologize, okay. So.
What does it mean for me?
And this is for the half-day retreat?
Yeah, so like to have the retreat, to think about when we would want to do the retreat.
Oh, that's, the twenty-first is not the retreat?
That's a school committee meeting. Yeah, we have to have one school committee meeting in the summer, so we'll have that on Wednesday, July twenty-first, and we can figure that remotely too, uh, since you, some people might not be uh here. But we need to find a date for our, our retreat.
Retreat?
Yes.
I, I was thinking that was a retreat.
What if we looked at the week, uh, no, not the week after that, because that's what she said.
I don't know if this has ever been done, but would you ever consider doing a retreat that morning on the twenty-first? Take the break and then do the meeting that evening? I'm here anyway.
Right, right. Getting a.
But that way, you're not jockeying around a couple of different days, but that's.
That's true.
I, I actually like that idea.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
I have to facilitate a seminar that day.
Ooh.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm free until eleven. I could do something r- early morning. But then I'm tied up, I'm sorry.
Morning work really quiet. You know me, I like to start at seven or earlier.
Mrs. Jet's here at five o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
Superintendent Jet. Um, yeah, you know, ooh, I'll be at school, but I totally forgot I'm running summer, that's right.
But I was just thinking, if you could commit to a morning, half-day, and then the, the, the meeting is that night remote, that gives you that break and you're not necessarily, but it's just a thought.
Do you want to think about it a little bit more?
Yeah.
Um, look at your calendars for another, if the twenty-first doesn't work, um, we could always try the week before. It doesn't have to be a Wednesday.
So, what time, if we were to do it on the twenty-first, what time if, if we met at from like seven to eleven or?
Hey, I'm up at the crack of dawn.
It can be.
Or we could do eight to eleven.
That's only three hours.
I know, I was going to say, is that enough time?
You know how long it takes us with these goals?
I know.
It's never fast.
Okay. That's why I was suggesting perhaps two.
I know, I thought that was a good idea, but I think scheduling is going to be difficult.
All right, I could send out one of those dual polls.
Okay.
Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Sure. Well, at least we got a date for July for the.
Okay.
For the actual meeting.
For the actual meeting, okay. And then perhaps, um, we'll come up with, I'll, I'll talk to Charlene and sort of try to figure out then when we would come back in August, and then what the schedule will look like for the rest of the year before we get together um for the retreat and stuff.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
And then I did include the goals in the packet here that we worked on last year, just so that our, our Bev- Beverly and Liz can look, Lizzie can look them over and get a sense of what we were, what we were looking for for this past year. We were quite ambitious here. Um, and just thinking about what we accomplished, and then what we'd like to think about moving forward for, for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. All right? Okay. Thank you guys. Great, thank you very much. Okay.
My turn?
You're up.
All right, um, all I have uh under my report is um approval of vendor warrants. Um, I'm going to make a motion uh for both of them together to approve vendor warrant number forty-seven, payable May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and thirty-five cents, and to approve vendor warrant number forty-eight, payable on June third, twenty twenty-one in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second?
Seconded by Rose Marin. Any discussion, questions, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Member Betty, you're up.
All right, um, health and wellness met last Friday morning. Um, first up, Superintendent Jet gave an update on the vaccination clinic that they had the previous Saturday where Manette Health Center came. Three hundred and thirty-three students were vaccinated.
Wow.
And James thanked uh Jackie Morgan, the custodial staff at Milton Public Schools, and the Manette Health Center for their efforts to make this clinic a success. And the second clinic is scheduled for June twelfth, also at the Field House. And then, I guess Desi was saying that there's a possibility that the vaccination for the next age group um for children from ages three and older will be approved in late August or early September. And um, so that's good news. Um, there was a uh joint meeting of Milton Public Schools Administration and uh Finance Subcommittee and the Select Board Subcommittee, where they were chatting about uh additional COVID funds that they have available and what our needs were. And from a health and wellness perspective, James was advocating for school adjustment counselors to be hired over the summer to continue to provide um uh counseling support for our students. Um, Jackie Morgan, um, we, we uh applied for and submitted an application for a wellness coach. And um, at our next meeting, which is in June, the health and wellness have to look at our goals, and then they have to be presented at the school committee. So, given our timing, that might happen at the next school committee meeting, we will be looking at our goals that you'll have to approve. Um, and we're trying to recruit students to come to the committee, and part of that is looking at our time when we're meeting, trying to get the students to come and participate. Um, Laurie Stillman reported that the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition budget has funding for the schools to hire a consultant to review the health curriculum at Milton Public Schools. And there are also um funds to analyze data from the Youth Risks Behavior Survey that Desi and the Department of Public Health administers, not only to Milton, but to other districts as well. Um, and Laurie reported that there's another speaker coming uh in September. She was a speaker that we had pre-pandemic, her name was Jessica Leahy, and she talked about the gift of failure.
Oh, yeah.
And that was very well received by parents. So, she's written a new book, and she's going to be speaking in September on the twenty-first, and her book is called Addiction Inoculation. And I, you know, it's been very well received, so people are looking forward to hearing from her. And then the youth group that uh Laurie supervises is called Milton Minds Matter. They're going to be hosting a mental health first aid group for teens in the fall. And that was it.
Wow, thank you. Um, Betty, so about the, and maybe Elaine wants to chime in, about the joint meeting with the finance committees and the COVID funds? Any dis, so do we know the amount that they have left over that they're going to give to the schools? And then what we will need to vote on at some point?
Yeah.
Or, Doc, Superintendent?
If I remember correctly, and Amy, you might, Amy probably is best to speak for this.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think the projected number was somewhere around six or seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
But um I did meet with Karen Praval, the finance director, on Tuesday afternoon.
Okay.
And some of those funds, um, they have identified needs at the town level.
Okay.
Um, for a few hundred thousand, but she and I focused on going through some things through um March thirty-first that was due to be filed by this Friday.
All right.
We identified about sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars worth of items that were paid for out of either a portion out of the general fund, and then the balance out of um the school esser money that we're going to transfer back over to the town cares. That we're going to transfer back over to the town cares grant, which will free up some of the S R money that we can use for some of these other initiatives. And then the second piece, we went through expectations or things that, um, the schools were expected or expected to, um, spend some of the school COVID money on.
Money on? Okay.
Either they have or things that, um, we identified as a team, and we went through those, some of them, she kinda, I put everything on the table. Let's just put, I put a million dollars on the table, and that got whittled down quite a bit, but there are, I think, at the end of the day, we were kind of in agreement of somewhere between three to three fifty through June. And then she said, let's talk about summer and next year after we get through June.
Okay.
So it was a productive meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, that ask included some additional funds for Chromebooks and technology needs that, um, the plan was to submit under S R two, so that will free up some money there that, again, we could put towards some of these adjustment counselors or whatever the school committee decides.
Great.
Yeah, so it was a good meeting, and useful.
Thank you so much. Um, one of the things I shared with Betty, she and I spoke briefly, I wasn't able to attend the joint meeting. Um, is that we talked previously at school committee about, um, a social emotional screener. I, I don't know if that would be a more of a long-term goal, I will say that in, in Brookline where I work, we, we have been using one this year, and I will say that it's very, um, it's a very effective tool, you, you, you use it several times a year, and you can measure changes in growth over that time period, and, and you can really target support for students based on the results of the screener. I think it would be helpful to us to sort of align with the things we've been talking about, and also align with some of the initiatives at the elementary, middle, and high school. So something to think about if we have the funds at some point, I know they're not, I know they're not inexpensive, but they are a worthwhile investment, yeah.
I sent you an email. Well, cuz Laurie Stillman did the research for us.
Yes, thank you for sending that.
Last year, and I sent, I sent it to James and to you, just to show you what Laurie's research had shown. Ironically, Denham is doing, where I work is, um, buying the exact same one that Laurie was recommending too, so. They had done their own research, and I showed them Laurie's research, and they were saying, oh, we're on the same page, so. I think that would be a, a, a good purchase if we could make it work.
I think so too. Thank you all for your efforts. Wonderful.
Can I just add one?
Yes, please, Dr. Superintendent.
You do wanna acknowledge Fallon Ambulatory Services as well, as part of the vaccine clinic, uh, cuz they did provide, uh, two E M Ts to be on.
Wow.
On, on, on the premises for the duration of the vaccine as a backup, so that was huge, and so I do, I do wanna acknowledge them as well.
Yes, and thank you so much for organizing that, and for the support in the community to organize that. Um, really making a huge difference, the vaccines are really making a huge difference, so, I'm glad that's, with the age is coming down. Alright, approval of minutes, the minutes are attached here in our packets. This is like the school choice one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second? I have just a couple of corrections.
Sure, actually, yeah, go right ahead.
I don't know how to do those.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, really quick, um, one thing is just up at the top. Um, my title is correct. Um, with Doctor Elizabeth Carroll, and then throughout the minutes, it's referred to as miss, so that's just one small thing. And then, on page five at the bottom, I just wanted to see if possible to insert, following the unanimous roll call vote around the naming rights for Pierce Library in honor of Superintendent Gormley. I had, just had a comment there about hoping that we could sort of keep in mind going forward the idea of a process for future naming opportunities that might consider other ideas around representation. For example, transparency, um, and that was just a separate comment, nothing to do with this particular decision. But I just hope we could maybe reflect that for going forward, thank you.
No, thank you for saying that, that's an important thing for us to put in there. Anyone else? Alright, so, the motion on the table is to approve the minutes as amended, um, do you have that?
I did.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, and it was seconded, um, all in favor of the amended minutes? Okay, six zero, wonderful, alright. Okay, our next meeting agenda item, Charlene sent an email prior to the meeting that we are honoring our retirees at the next meeting. And she wanted us to figure out how we were going to do that. Those were instructions in her email, that I read before I came.
I thought she figures that out for us.
Well, I don't know, she said something about, like, that we've had, like, a little reception.
Yeah.
Um.
Are we allowed to do that?
I, I don't know, I'm so confused, I told you, I don't know the rules anymore.
Yeah, everything's changing constantly.
Do you wanna?
You are, you are allowed to bring folks into the facility, a smaller number of folks, um, as of, uh, May twenty-ninth. A lot of those restrictions have been lifted. However, within the facility, we could do some sort of acknowledgement, but you can't, uh, you could obviously eat. Um, we eat in school every day, but you still have to have the social distancing.
Yes. Um, she said we could do it outside, I'm sorry, she said we could do something outside.
You could do, you could do a ceremony outside, but that's whether permitting.
Yeah. Right.
Or you could do something in the auditorium, and we might have to switch if we do something like that. To acknowledge, and very similar to like an award ceremony, if we wanted to do something like that.
Right.
And have folks walk up, and maybe we could coordinate with Mike.
Okay.
Uh, or, or Milton Access Cable to kind of livestream it or record.
Do you know how many, um, people are retiring?
Um, I believe it was. I think it was seven with the possibility of one more.
I was gonna, I thought it was like maybe, I, yeah, for some reason, I thought it was like between seven and nine. Okay, so we could circle back with Charlene in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, and just sort of make a definitive plan. And also, we might wanna check with the retirees, like, how comfortable they, I don't know who's retiring off the top of my head, like, how comfortable they are with the idea of coming to school, if they're not currently coming to school, or. Okay, she, she did ask to discuss it, so you're open to any of those possibilities, something perhaps in the auditorium, or small, outside, brief, just to honor, okay, great, alright.
And in the past, with a small number, if it is seven to eight at the time of the next, we could just do it in the lobby.
Okay, that's what she said too, right. Okay.
Small, uh, and someone could say a few words, yeah.
Um, and then, um, is there any other, are there any, do you think we'll have a finance report at our next meeting?
Probably not.
Okay, okay, and I think the high schoolers might come to, with their suggestion of something that they want to propose to us. Is there anything else that we've, any, I don't think there's any presentations, or?
No, but we have the answers in the.
Yes, we'll have the vote for the high school, right, exactly.
The dual enrollment.
Right, and I'll bring a clean copy of the policy, I mean, the, um, sub, the Subcommittee and Advisory Committee.
Um, I just wanna amend what I said, there, I will, I will not probably have anything to report out from Finance Committee meetings.
Okay.
However, I have to have a report because we have to approve the vendor warrants, so.
Okay, right, no, just nothing in particular, okay, alright, 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 and committee, it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we having anything about the equity audit?
So I haven't heard anything from, um, Director Prack Martin yet.
So.
I was gonna circle back with her.
As of today, we were trying to coordinate an initial finding, uh, meeting with Cambridge Education.
Okay. Okay.
And I was available, uh, I'm gonna say tomorrow, today, it was Friday. But I think Cambridge came back and said they would prefer, uh, the eleventh.
Okay.
Which is a week from Friday, so we're still working on that, but there's a strong possibility, you could put equity audit, audit on the, there's a strong possibility they'll still be there, but they wanted to just give us the initial findings.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Cuz it is, since it is our last meeting, I mean, we'll have one in July now, also.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And if you think of anything between now and then, just give us an email, and we'll add it to the agenda, as long as we post it, um, in the proper time, we'll be okay.
And with that report, would that be coming from you, Superintendent Jet, or would we actually have somebody from?
You would have representatives from Cambridge Education that will present there.
Okay, could, could we ask them, then, um, in public, on camera, to talk about the many things that they are doing in this?
Yes.
Review audit beyond one survey?
Yes.
Thank you.
And could we also add to that list the committee that's going to be implementing that work? I think by that point, the decision would have been made who's on it. And what the plan is, if there is one.
They are.
There's a, yeah. I would imagine that it'll be a multi-classified, um, plan and report.
Alright, then I am going to make a motion to adjourn from our regular meeting into executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, and I'm just gonna say to either conduct strategies in preparation for negotiations with union or non-union personnel, conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union or non-union personnel, and to approve minutes. We will not return to open session. Um, this is a roll call vote, okay, uh, Member Ross Denny. Um, to go, to go into executive session, just say.
I approve it, yes?
Okay, yes. Member White?
Yes.
Member Abahart, yes? Member Rose Marion?
Yes.
Member, Doctor Craighead?
Yes.
Doctor Carroll?
Yes.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned, we will see you at graduation.